Good evening. I'm Javier Figueroa, Mayor Javier Figueroa, and I'm calling this regular meeting of the University Place City Council for Monday, March 17th, 2025 to order. And will the city clerk do the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Councilmember Boykin?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Present.
Councilmember Mcluskey?
I'm here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Grassi?
Here.
Mayor Protim Wood?
Present.
Mayor Figueroa?
Present.
Mayor Havakorn?
Thank you, and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Worthington.
Please stand if you are able and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councilmember.
My pleasure.
And next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I'm calling for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
And if there's any objections to approving the agenda, here or none, the agenda is approved. And we'll move on to item number five, public comments. And at this time, we have a portion of the agenda that's a public comment, and you have the opportunity, as members of the public, to provide comments to the city. And we'll start with online. Anybody online?
I don't see anyone online, Mayor.
Okay, anybody here present that would like to come up for public comment? Okay, we're all good then. The public comment session is closed, and we'll move on to consent agenda. And at this time, I'm calling for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
Second.
Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? I see none, and the motion passes unanimously. And we'll move on to number seven, agenda item number seven, public hearing and council consideration for stormwater management program update. And what we have is this is to adopt the 2025 update to the city's stormwater management program. And we do have staff reports, Mr. Jack Eklund, Public Works Director, and Todd Smith, he's the NPDES, and I'll have him explain what that is. Coordinator, Mr. Eklund.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. As you mentioned, I'm Jack Eklund, Director of Public Works, and with me is Todd Smith, our NPDES coordinator. And Todd, what is the NPDES real quick?
I might need to just change the title someday. We don't want to do this. National Pollute Discharge Elimination System.
And that's our permit that regulates our storm drainage system in the city. It's a state administered permit. So tonight, we are bringing to you for public hearing the 2025 update to the city's stormwater management plan. This plan was previously studied by council during the March 3rd council meeting. Now, I do want to draw your attention. I have placed a copy of the plan on the DAS for you. We had noticed a typo on pages 24 and 25 in the document that was originally provided in your council packet, and so the typo has now been corrected in the plan provided on the DAS. The city is required, under its NPDES Phase II permit, to develop, implement, and annually update its stormwater management program. This program lists the components required under the NPDES Phase II permit and requires the actions and activities to be conducted by the city in meeting our permit requirements. The changes to this permit or the service water management programs, we've updated the public comment period and the reference council meetings for this time period, and the public comment period for this has been open since March 3rd and has closed effectively at the end of this public hearing. We have not received any public comments to date. However, it was published on our website and also notified during the study session for folks watching at home. In addition, we have updated the required milestones that need to be achieved during the permit period in the new plan. We've also removed all non-required appendices and any associated documents that were referenced. And then we have added a new element, which is a compliance with underground injection control well program. This is a state law that we do have to have a program that identifies compliance with these UIC wells, which are more traditionally referred to as dry wells, basically place where underground stormwater is directed to infiltrate. And so although it's not a requirement to be incorporated in your stormwater management program, Department of Ecology strongly advises that that's the best way to address the state law of implementing a UIC well program. So that's now been added in as an element 12 of our plan. And then also, we have done some minor clarifications to language to reduce confusion with some of the different items. We have reviewed this, both internally with staff, and we also had a consultant do a review of this service water management program to verify that the update does meet the requirements of our NPDES Phase II permit. And then with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, but we do recommend approval of the program in front of you.
Okay, at this point, we'll go for clarification. As Mr. Eklund indicated, we've studied this, not so much a study session as clarification before we go to public comment. Councilmember Worthington?
Thank you, Mayor Figueroa, appreciate that. Jack, do we have any UIC wells in current use?
We do. We have about 150, so it's quite a few. There are different requirements for wells that were built prior to 2006 versus ones after, and the majority of our wells are prior to 2006. However, we do have to go through and register each of these through the state site, and so that's part of what's identified in the program and also identifies the requirements both for us and to notify private developments or private entities that also build it of the requirement to register these wells.
So with those approximately 150 wells sprinkled throughout the city, is there something about the regulations that are going to change their current availability for use?
So how it works is if we have to do an assessment, the ones that are prior to 2006, we need to do an assessment on, do they pose a significant hazard to the water, groundwater? In general, none of ours are in like industrial areas or something that would typically identify a huge risk, and none of them are particularly close to the groundwater table. One thing that's, our groundwater table is quite deep throughout the city. However, there's an assessment that will need to be done, which we are currently working on, and then it'll have to be registered for each one. All of our ones that are after 2006, since we would have installed those per current standards, those ones, it's called a presumptive, it meets the requirements because we did build them per current standards. So those actually are easier to build a document because you don't need the assessment and so forth. But it is, since there's a lot of them, it will be a bit of an exercise to just get them all registered though.
Absolutely. And so is there a fee for the property owner that has these wells for us to do the assessment or something of that nature?
We only are responsible for the city wells. Our responsibility for private is just to notify private entities that they're responsible to register them on their own.
And do they register with us or with DOE?
With the state.
Okay, the State Department of Commerce. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jack, on those dry wells that the city has, how often do we inspect those and how often do we have to clean them out?
So we inspect all the dry wells, well, the dry wells themselves, we inspect at least once every two years. Some of the, because an infiltration tank falls under this requirement, and so typically those would be inspected yearly. But we only have a couple, a few of those, but the majority are dry wells that get inspected about once every other year. And then typically, they get cleaned out. Usually, we clean them out at that time too, even though, like even if it hasn't reached the sediment level, it needs recleaning. Our typical operation is just, we're out there with the machine, we'll clean out the few inches of stuff that's in there too, so.
Thank you. Before I move on, Councilmember Boykin, I know you're in there somewhere online, so do you have any questions, I mean clarification? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I do not, thank you so much, just trying to stay, trying to keep from challenging folks publicly with.
Very good.
I don't have any, thank you so much.
Thank you. The only thing I have, Mr. Eklund, is that if you would please, a lot of folks don't know about how this is paid for, can you just summarize it real quick as to how this gets paid for and the taxes?
Yes, so our stormwater management program is paid for through our service water management fee, which includes both our maintenance of our storm system, the compliance efforts that we have to do that are mandated by the state, and then any capital projects that we have to do to be in compliance. So this is all funded through the storm management fee that is in University Place. It gets, it's incorporated into the property tax bill each year.
Both residential and commercial?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to public comment, and I'll open that up for public hearing and take comments, and after that, we'll close the public hearing portion of that. So is anyone online for the public hearing?
I don't see anyone online, Mayor.
Okay, anyone here present from the public that would like to comment? I don't see anybody coming forward, and so at this point, I will close the public hearing, and we'll move on to council consideration. I call a motion to consider the 25 update.
Mayor, I move to adopt the 2025 update to the City of University Place Phase II NPDES Stormwater Management Program.
Second.
And will the city clerk do the roll call?
Discussion.
Oh, excuse me, my bad. Okay, so before we do a vote, let's go for a discussion and comments, and I'll just let people raise their hand. I don't see anybody raising their hand. Oh, Mayor Protim takes a shot at this.
Only comment I want to say is thanks for the effort you and your team put into this, and it looks really good. Thank you. Good update.
Thanks. Anyone else? Now, this is not a shy council. It's just that we study this every year. We're very familiar with the subject matter, so we're not shy of asking a lot of questions here. So with that, I don't see anybody else, so we'll move on with a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Boykin?
Yes.
Councilmember Worthington?
Aye.
Councilmember Mcluskey?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Grassi?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Figueroa?
Aye.
Mayor vote result 7-0 for the ice.
Lucky you, Mr. Eklund. All right. Okay, we'll move on to item number eight, city manager and council comments. And our city manager is not feeling well either, but he's watching online, and he has someone come before us.
I actually can make some comments, Mayor. I still got a voice.
Okay, then. City Manager Steve Sugg.
All right, one item here in council. Last month, the Government Finance Officers Association notified the city that they were issuing, they were awarding the city the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Now, earlier you heard, and this is due to the work of our finance director, Leslie Blaisdell, and her team, and you heard from her earlier this evening, giving an excellent report on the fourth quarter and the wrap-up on 2024. That work during 2024 was recognized by Government Financial Officers Association with this achievement for excellence. It's the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. This is the 27th year that our finance team has garnered this award for the City of University Place, and I congratulate Leslie and her team for this outstanding achievement. And we should never get complacent in that this is a routine event. It's not, you need to reach that threshold of excellence in order to receive this award. So that's my report, and council, thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move on to council comments and reports, and we'll start with my right and Councilmember Grassi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Happy St. Patrick's Day. It's nice to see so many friends and faces in the chambers this evening. I will be brief. I do want to say another congratulations to Leslie and our finance department. Excellent report, and that takes a lot of dedication, eye to detail, and it behooves all of our citizens, so I just want to thank you for your charmed, dedicated work. It's wonderful. I also want to invite the community to join me Thursday at 11:00. We're going to be cutting the ribbon at the Soul Kitchen on 40th and Bridgeport, so 44th and Bridgeport, I should say. So that'll be at 11:00 a.m. Thursday. I know it was noted in our city newsletter, but I'm excited to welcome a new business to our city. And most recently, last week, I had the opportunity to attend the Unified Regional Approach to Homelessness led by our county and was appointed to be a part of their elected leadership team for that effort. So I'm excited to represent University Place in a unified approach to homelessness and have our city represented at the table. Every jurisdiction was represented there, county executive and community partners. I'm excited about this effort and what we can do together. More to come, but grateful to be a part and to represent our city in this important endeavor. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and we'll move on to Councilmember Fleming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I just want to kind of piggyback on Councilmember Grassi's earlier remarks. You know, at a time in which, you know, citizens, all of us who are citizens, are looking at government with a jaundiced eye in terms of accountability, and I've been around this for a while, you know, every year, we recognize Leslie and her team publicly for receiving this certificate, but that's no easy task. And I know this council drills you on the financial reports, and year after year, as long as I can remember, you always brought the city in either on budget or under budget. And I hope that we can do a little bit more just to recognize you for your leadership in that area and really give thanks for having you here in the city and for what you do for us. So thank you. And that's all I have. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Worthington?
Thank you, and I'd like to also echo Councilmember Fleming's recognitions of the excellent work Leslie, you and your team have put together for us, and you make us very proud with a 27-year record of those achievements being recognized in such a public and very significant way. But it's also the fact that with that, it carries our trust and our community's trust, and we know how hard you work, and we also know, I'm often amazed at how close the numbers are to the projections. So as we heard a report in an earlier meeting this morning, or this afternoon, rather, it was all very good, and I have complete faith in those abilities. So thank you for that, and thank you for your team's efforts as well. Beyond that, I wanted to share something with the council and with the community. This is my 12th year, my third term. I will not be filing for a fourth term. I've decided to not run again. Jill and I have been here for 26 years, and we're about to make arrangements to change our address. So we want to get a little closer to our grandkids, and we're excited about that opportunity, but we're going to miss this very, very much. It is my intention to stay either throughout my term or until my registered address changes, voting registration address changes. But it's been an amazing, amazing 12 years, and I've appreciated your help and support through all of that. Thank you.
Well, I was going to wait till last, but I think I'm going to go ahead. Not going to let you go that quick. Well, that's big news, probably the biggest news here in University Place. Thank you for making that public because I think it is big. I think the public has recognized you more than you probably recognize yourself, along with this council, especially me, when we've been together a long time on this work, along with other council members. Talking about finance, Mr. Worthington, Councilmember Worthington, and among others, but led a very good, I won't say fight by the will, to straighten out our reserves and a financial picture. Staff does all they can, and let me tell you, that rating that we get because of our staff is the process, following the process, following, making sure that all the i's and t's are dotted and t's are crossed. That's a huge one, 27 years out of 30 is big. What finance and this administration needed is a council that understood finances and understood savings and understood reserves, and where we're at now, it's a big deal where we're at now financially for this city, and you contributed to that a lot. I'll probably say this again when your last day here, but I think that's the biggest one. You did a lot in many different areas, but to us, and I know when it comes to the city, you know about governance. Governance is all about making sure that our city, state, healthy in its finances, and you need a great council to be able to keep that on track. And then you need the administration to make sure that they're filling all the paperwork right. So you have a great team here altogether for this city, and that's what makes us great. So thank you for sharing. On to my other comments is that I was at a National League of Cities up in DC, along with a couple of other council members, and the one thing which I told our council members before we went, that I was going to work on making sure that our Congress members, not just ours here in this district, but also others that I could speak to, which I did speak to three others, and that was that the Pigeon Sound Energy Council, a metropolitan planning organization that is developed by a federal law, that would be kept being funded by the Department of Transportation, because that's one of the biggest grants, $50 million worth in the past 20 years, and that's what helped get our city developed. So to me, it was very important that they heard on that issue alone, and I'm glad I did because even Strickland, Congresswoman Strickland, and I did visit Congressman Newhouse from Eastern Washington and Bon Gartner from Eastern Washington, and they indicated, out of all the people they spoke to that had visited them, none of them spoke about NPOs. And it was good for them to talk, to have that set, because now it's on their radar. And that's all I wanted to make sure, they understood that it was on their radar, and they were able to check into it and make sure that they agreed it's something important that should be kept funded. The other one that I want to speak about is, I want to, you're now speaking to my peers here, I wanted to, for our next workshop coming up in June, I have a particular topic that I want to bring to you to see if you, okay, because it's your workshop as well, and I asked the staff to look into having the Jurassic Parliamentary Workshop brought to us at the workshop. And to really get us, it's a three-hour workshop, and about $2,300 total for three hours, and she will come here to really just dive in to all this that we need to know as council members, as Mayor, Mayor Protim, and also how, you know, to work with staff in those procedures. And I thought the value is really there to have us at a very high level understanding that so that we're not missing a beat in how we operate here as professionals. So I would like to, and I don't need it now, but if you can just let me know, or Steve, our city manager, know that yea or nay, or you know, something that's just let me know, this is, you know, it'd be nice to have it at the retreat, then we can go from there. And if we have four, then we'll put it, you know, on the retreat. If not, we'll skip it. So we need your input, okay? And the last one is kind of a not-ball here for me, but I think you've seen me do this before, but during the fire alarm, I met this young lady, and Tiffany is here way back there, wave your hand, and she, I can't remember your last name, so my apology, but Tiffany's good enough. She is new in UP, new in University Place. She's a military. She's just moved in into university about a year ago, but she's from the base, and we got to talking about, you know, why she's here, and she's the first time here. She's never attended a city council meeting. So I always find that to be two things. One, we always welcome, as we all know, we kind of see the same faces a lot of times, but to see a new face is a rare and special thing for all of us, but then again, she's a military person. And to us, Tiffany, we're very, very close to the military, and I did let her know and explain about the 16 cab or Community Connector, which she was not aware of, and that was pretty cool for her. So we welcome you. Thank you for coming and showing up, and I hope we see you again. And I'm good, so Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mayor. First, Happy St. Patrick's Day. Second, welcome Tiffany. Third, I would also like to congratulate our finance team, and not just for the outstanding accounting and reporting that you do every year, but the fact that I'm still amazed when I talk to leaders from other cities and how they're always struggling with their budgets and scrambling to make ends meet and making cuts and everything else. And for the last, I don't know how many years, we've actually had a very conservative, very stable budget, and I know a large portion of that is due to the work of our finance team and the way they budget, the way they estimate things, and so I very much appreciate that. Thank you. Let's see, the one activity I did last week outside of council-related or council meetings was I also met with the contractor from the Unified Approach to Homelessness. I went through their survey with them, thought it was interesting, their questions were, it was, let's just say interesting. I'm really curious to see where this goes, and I'm glad you're going to be representing us on that committee, because I think it could be very valuable for our community. And then finally, was not expecting to talk about this, but thank you, Steve, for your 12 years. You've been a leader to this council, a mentor to me, and I very much appreciate everything you've ever done, and I'm sure there's going to be a more formal goodbye later, so I'll save more formal comments for then, but thank you.
Thank you, council.
That concludes the council, Mayor.
Councilmember Mcluskey?
All right, thank you. Welcome to University Place, Tiffany, and thank you for your service. We appreciate all of that, especially the latter. Well, Councilmember Worthington? That caught me a little. Well, Councilmember Worthington, that caught me a little off-guard. I thought you were going to be in here for another four years. I just assumed that. I enjoyed your expertise and your thoughtful ideas, as well as your positioning statements on topics. Sometimes when I go down the bunny trail one way, your comment, because of your experience and background, which is very valuable to our council, makes me pause and think, you know, otherwise, or not. But I do really enjoy the intelligent and heartfelt conversation and discussion that you bring to the council. And like Mayor Protem says, more comments later on. Maybe a special cake for you, too.
Oh, all right. Makes you happy. Thank you.
I also would like to congratulate Leslie and her team. It's not easy pulling together all those moving parts for all those years and make it all come out balanced. And not only that, you explained it so well, and simply that even somebody like me can understand it. Because I know it's complex, and there's laws and rules and regulations that you have to work with to make it all come out. And I trust you, you're my confidant in the financial world of University Place. And so, I do appreciate you and your team. Keep up the good work. I went to an Up for Art meeting, and it looks like that organization is, probably has a little more life left into it. And so, we're talking about doing some music events, and so that's just getting off the ground floor there. Looks like the Friends of the Library is also would like to get involved in it as well. A couple of local artists are venturing in on the organization, too. So, I don't know how it's going to look, what it's going to look like. It may, it may look different than it has been in the past, but I think it's going to be a great asset as well to our discussion in September that we'll have for the Art Commission. And they're excited about that, too. I went to the NLC in Martindon, DC with councilmember Boykin and our mayor. Councilmember Boykin and I are part of the Small Cities Council, and we went to that breakout session. There's a lot of brainstorming going on, a lot of confusion because of the dynamics that are, that's happening in the federal government, particularly around funding. Everyone is fearful that their funding is going to be cut, which it probably, more than likely, will. But we're trying to beg that the city fundings don't get cut, because we desperately need that. And so, they talked about homelessness, affordable housing, financials, and some other topics, but nothing too definitive moving forward with that. Went to a few breakout sessions there. That's always helpful and beneficial, and enjoyed that. The other meeting I went to is my funding committee meeting, the Zoo Trek Authority Board. Get to talk about the animals. I sent council a PowerPoint presentation because I thought it was really cute and well-done, and it also had some really good details and facts and figures about their annual report. So, the, one of the topics that we discussed in the meeting was about bringing pandas to the zoo. That's a big request, not only from the residents, but also from the authority, was wondering if we could ever get visits from China with their, you know, special free panda bears. And apparently, we're not big enough for that, unless we have $30 million a year to support it. So, we'll just have to go to other zoos like the Atlanta Zoo to see the pandas that are on loan from China. So, we'll stick with our regular critters in the Northwest, and they're cute and furry, and they always attract a lot of visitors. The zoo last year attracted 760,952 visitors. The trek attracted 104,6972 visitors. And at the zoo, they brought back the eye-to-eye shark dive, so you can go in the water and be eye-to-eye with the sharks in the tank. That is also part of a soldier recovery program as well. And so, the Elephant Yard transition will temporarily be transitioned to a reptile exhibit. So, you can get up close and personal with the reptiles, to include some tortoises that they'll bring in. And they'll keep their pens heated, because the Northwest isn't their climate. And in front of the Elephant Yard will be a maze for people to go in and learn about the different animals and as they work their way through the maze. At the Northwest Trek, there is one Hillier A-frame that you can stay overnight at. And they're looking at expanding that program with one or two more units to see how that goes. So, you may have a overnight experience at the zoo. So, it'll be like, you know, a trek safari. The hay and commissary that feeds the animals at trek, they'll have a larger facility, and it'll be easier for them to bring in and out their supplies. So, they're excited about that. Unfortunately, there was some windstorm damage of $150,000 at trek, bear enclosure and another enclosure, but no animals escaped, and no animals were hurt, and no humans were hurt. So, that's getting repaired. Also, the trek has a new veterinarian, Katie Anderson, so I'd like to welcome her to the staff there. So, heard really good things about her. And I will conclude my report with that.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Boykin, I know your voice is hurting, but if you'd like to just say anything, you're welcome to at this point.
Mayor, let me just get some highlights that I just want to underscore, because it is too important. So, let me first appreciate and echo the sentiments of council with Leslie Blaisdell and her finance team one more time, demonstrating the standard of excellence and continuing her team to training to standard of excellence. It's not a small thing. I don't, by any means, believe that we take it for granted. We just really want to appreciate the consistency and the acknowledgement one more time that we have excellence in the City of University Place, that firmly elevates every time there's an opportunity for us to hear about our finances. Wanted to also congratulate Councilmember Grossi on her degree of care and persistence in ways that I think brought loads opportunities for leadership in the capacity that she's just been selected, selected is just absolutely affirming. And I look forward to her leadership, her perspective, and the engagement that the city's going to enjoy, her leadership and initiative on homelessness in that entity. Certainly wanted to acknowledge the immense contribution by Councilmember Worthington. He is a jewel, and in that regard, there have been clearly a demonstration of him trying to fight back the tears, but the city is going to have tears of melancholy at a minimum, as they reflect upon how our city will go forward without him just excellence. Wanted to underscore that. Wanted to welcome Tiffany as well. Thank you for your service. Thank you also for choosing to spend time right where you see your council put forth its best for the government. You could have been anywhere else, but you chose to be there tonight, and that's never small. So, thank you for your civic engagement. Thank you for the opportunity to have attended the NLC. It was immensely important, in my view, to get firsthand engagement and firsthand conversation with folks who share the same passion and expectation about how to get good governance out of our opportunity to lead, and certainly get good guidance from how we can make impacts back in our respective cities, from engaging in that dialogue. I thought the conversations and workshops was extremely impactful. Also wanted to, yes, really appreciate our Washington delegation. I had an opportunity to have conversation with Congresswoman Strickland, as well as Congresswoman Schreier, who both had a degrees of care of how is it that we could stave off any challenges that Washington may be that much more attuned to because of different ways of how funding challenges have come about, and what are the best things that we can do in terms of sharing those stories and helping people through as they just recognize how we all should be mindful about doing more with less. And then lastly, I wanted to just thank our city manager, Mr. Sugg, regarding his recommendation, taking a look at some top-notch spaces where economic development and a unique way of contributions unfold for the benefit of their respective cities. And while we were, while we were at that point locally, got a chance to visit Bedastero, councilmember McCuskey, and it was, in my views, an eye-opening way in which we can really see, again, economic development, public spaces, as well as community uniquely coming together in a way that suggests that there's a blend of old and new and flexibility and transformation that's always available in every moment. And we could see that in really smart ways in which they had positioned their space. So, my apologies again for, my apologies again for the challenge that I've got right now. Would really like to be there with this council, who, in my view, is just really invested in how we can do really great things for our city. That concludes my report. I'm Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much. And of course, Mr. Mayor was also at the NLC conference.
Very good. Okay. So, Councilmember Boykin, I have to give it to you. That had to have been tough, but thank you. That was really helpful, I think, to all of us. But, I mean, I know I've had that soreness, and it's really hard to speak, and I could tell. So, my mother once told me, if my throat felt like that, take a shot of tequila, honey, and lemon. Okay? Shot of tequila, honey, and lemon. Do it, do it right now. But, save your voice. Very good. But anyway, we, I have just a small comment, and I'll leave the last comment to Councilmember Worthington, which she requested. But real quick, councilmembers, we need to schedule the Jurassic Parliament person for the workshop sooner than later. So, if you can let either Steve, myself, or even the city clerk within the next two days, would really, really be appreciated. So, if you can mark that down. Thank you. Councilmember Worthington?
Thank you, Mayor Vigro. Appreciate that. And I'll try not to take too much time with this, and I hope there will be some other opportunity to express this more fully as well. But I do want, I want Tiffany to know that, welcome. I didn't know you were in the room until now, or until earlier, but glad to have you here. And by the way, as long as you're a registered voter now that you live in UP, there's an opening on the city council. So, think about that, which is really the reason I wanted to make the announcement I did tonight, was to give people some, several weeks to think about if they would like to run, because the opportunity is here. It is immensely rewarding, immensely challenging, and it's a great, great thing to be part of a team like this, and to be representing a community that we're also very proud of. But I would encourage people to consider that. Filing week is May 5th to the 9th, and that's when you would file for election, and it only takes a little bit of money to pay for your filing fee. But you can find out about more of that on the various websites. But thank you all. Thanks for the kind words, and I'll be here for forthcoming meetings, as I mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we'll move on to the study session, excuse me. We're moving on to the study session, and the first study session we have is city events. This is presented, and this is only for information and discussion on city events. It's not up for a later vote or resolution or anything else. And we'll have Lisa Purtorik, our Administrative Services Director, to do the presentation. We also have a guest presenter, Farah De Rosier, Senior Risk Management Representative from the Washington Cities Insurance Authority, that will be presenting along with Ms. Purtorik.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I announce the wrong person? The chief is up here. Am I in trouble, chief? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. Good evening. So, Lisa Purtorik, Director of Administrative Services, pitch-hitting tonight for our city manager, Steve Sugg. Events encapsulates all city departments. It really is a team effort, and so that's why we'll have a number of staff here helping present this evening. As the mayor mentioned, we do have members from WCIA who are here, and we will introduce them a little bit later in the presentation. Also wanted to let you know that virtually online, we have our Community and Events Manager, Marion Holloway, available for any questions that you may have. And we will have also Matt Kazer, our city attorney, and Chief Pat Burke presenting small portions as well. So, to kick off the discussion for tonight, these are the main points that we will cover. We're going to look at what a city event is versus what a city-sponsored event is, provide some clear delineation between the two there. We'll touch on the current budgeted city events, and I know there was a question related to that that came up in the Finance Committee meeting, so hopefully we'll provide some clarification there for you. We'll talk about best practices for city events. Chief Burke will discuss and provide an overview of an event action plan. Then WCIA will come up and provide presentation on best practices and their recommendations. And then we'll have a very brief duck days after action report and a few recommendations. So, talking about city events, there are 11 events that are budgeted for the 2025 year, and you'll see them on your screen. The total budgeted cost for events for 2025 is $273,000, so that's in total. And we have a conservative estimate that total staff time helping to support these variety of events is about 878 hours. That's a conservative number, because we know that not every single employee captures every single hour and reports that, but that gives you a good idea of how much staff time it really does take to do these various events. So, here is a very general event cost breakdown on one sheet. The first column are the 11 events. You'll see that they have parentheses with 20 participants or 2,000 participants. That's the number of folks that we estimate that come to the various events. Again, it's only an estimate. We don't have a mechanism... only an estimate. We don't have a mechanism as of yet to count the number of folks. But, these are estimates that have been provided to us by staff who attend those events. In the second column, you'll see the budgeted amount for 2025 for that very specific event. The third column are staff time estimates and the equivalent budget cost for staff time related to those events. And then the last column you'll see includes outside agencies and partnerships of folks that we partner for the various events. And so, that's the breakdown of the table. Leslie Blaisdell, our Finance Director, did want to confirm and let you know that for the Winter Fest, you'll see that budget being $108,000. But, for 2025, $50,000 of that is going to the purchase of a new tree. So, that amount is a bit of an anomaly, and on a regular basis, it's closer to about $50,000 annually.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Worthington.
Thank you. So, I just want to get some clarity on the chart, and thank you. The chart is very helpful. But, let's take a look at Music on the Square, for example, where it says there's eight concerts, 100 participants. So, is that in those eight concerts only a total of 100, or is that in every eight concert? On the average, there's 100?
That's a great question. I don't know. Marion, are you online and able to chime in there? You might have a better estimate.
Yes, I am. That would be per concert.
So, 100 attendees per concert times eight, we have 800 there. Okay.
Yes, councilmember.
And that applies to the other events. There's similar ones where we're seeing a frequency and then a number that I think is the average of each individual event.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
So, the next slide, I will turn over to our city attorney, Matt Kazer, to discuss the differentiation between city event and city sponsorship of third-party events.
Thanks, Lisa. The events that have been discussed so far, the 11, are the ones that are put on directly by the city. Council may recall, about a year ago, I double-checked, it was March 4th of last year, council passed a comprehensive code relating to donation and sponsorships. And one of the things that council had recognized is what are the criteria and factors that make city sponsorship of somebody else's event? Essentially, they put on the event, we get credit for being sponsored in whole or part by the city and university place, as the case may be. Council adopted a six-factor list. I'm not going to go read through each of the six factors, as it's been codified. A couple ones that I do want to highlight, though, simply speaking, though, without reading all the factors, is obviously recognizing that they have some degree of broad public importance and that they are free and open to the public, and that they do reflect favorably both on the city as well as the community. As council may recall, as part of those sponsorship program, each of those agreements come back before council for council approval. So, that's all I really wanted to say on that at this point in time, except to note that you will have one sponsorship agreement coming down the pipeline in an upcoming meeting with Dance Theater Northwest and the recital series, which is something that council has previously sponsored in the past.
Okay.
That's all I was going to say on this one.
Questions? Councilmember McCluskey?
Yes. Can you tell, for the benefit of the people that are listening in, and as a reminder of the process that it takes for a citizen to bring the event, to request city sponsorship?
Certainly. So, the six factors here is that the code portion indicates that they should be evaluated, that criteria, and the applicant should make application regarding that. We haven't developed an application form, to my knowledge.
You haven't?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay.
So, but there's nothing stopping a person from saying, hey, here's my event, and tailoring the ask around those six factors. We would certainly ask, you know, our loose rule of thumb is get it to us 90 days or so in advance.
Ninety?
Right.
Okay.
Because what will happen is, obviously, we'll have to, council will approve an agreement, you know, and so that would have to be contractual between the city and the sponsor. And then that's the factor that comes before the council.
So, they could just do a little of interest.
Dear City University Place, please sponsor the following event. Under your code, you look at these factors. I believe my program qualifies in here, is why.
Right. Okay. This sounds pretty easy. Thank you.
It's easy to say.
Easy to say, easy to write, but not easy to approve. Did I get it right?
Pretty close.
Pretty close. Okay. Thank you.
Very good.
And one thing I just do want to add, though, if council is looking at more of a formal application form around those, obviously, if council gives direction, I don't want something more formal than that, we can certainly proceed down that pathway, too.
Ms. McCluskey, are you good?
Oh, yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Grassley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to just echo my voice to have a, one opinion is to have a formal application. I think it's, in my opinion, it's an easy way to formulate the process. But, where does someone find this direction, this code, and these rules on our website right now?
Our municipal code has, our website has links to the municipal code, so admittedly, it would require a little bit of a hunt and peck.
It would require a what?
A little bit of a hunt and peck.
Okay. So, in the, so, how can we, I'm asking, how could we remedy it so it's a little easier for people to find?
We may have to give it a little increased visibility on our website.
Okay.
Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That sparked me to start thinking. I'm one who always believes in less government and being more supportive of people. So, I'm not too wild and crazy about more forms for people to fill out, but what I do like is keeping it simple. So, if someone wants to get a sponsorship, making this more visible versus, as you pointed out, the hunt and peck method, I would favor that. And I think if we ask citizens just to kind of address these six questions that you have here, that would be sufficient, provided it's complete, and then bring it to the council, and we could go from there. So, I like that idea better. My preference. So, thank you.
All right. So, now we're going to move forward to the event best practices portion of the conversation. So, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Burke to talk about the event action plans.
Thank you. An event action plan really takes critical information and places it into one document that we can reference during an event. Usually, we'll get started on these a few months prior to a major event, and it really is a team effort as these get created. It's often city staff, the West Pierce and the City Management Coalition, police, fire, and then event partners that are all involved as we create this plan. Some common elements that we'll see in an EAP are an event schedule, objectives, a site assessment, medical plan, an assignment list for staff, and contact information, also weather, medical plan. So, pretty detailed. Once a plan is approved and completed, it's distributed to all staff participating in the event, and really ensures that we're prepared, that we have a plan in place, that we have all of the necessary people and groups involved in that plan, and then when the event comes, that we're all operating on the same sheet of music.
Councilmember Worthington?
Chief, or Lisa, either one, during a parade, do we follow something similar to the incident command structure? Do we activate essentially an EOC-type location? Does this work for us as a live practice, demonstration for emergency operation centers and such?
I missed the first part of your question. Was it during?
Oh, when we're doing these, something like a parade, a major event for us. Do we follow some of the steps or the approach that you would use during an emergency event? More as not because of the, I guess, because the potential is there, I suppose, but it's more about just getting that into our blood, getting it into our routine, so we're familiar with such things.
Yeah, I'll start on that. The forms that we're using, whether it were a planned event or a response to an emergency, the same forms on whether we were doing this in UP or someone in another state or responding to a similar event, we'd use the same types of forms. There are those standardized forms. In terms of, you know, the EOC or initiating that, that, you know, we could do that, and that would be a part of this process. That's not something, you know, in terms of, I guess you could speak more to some of the city events. I think that would be more of a larger scale. Would you want to add anything to that?
Yeah. So, we, in terms of like opening an EOC, we don't open up an EOC for these smaller types of events. That gets saved for more like the US Open type of event, which you were all involved in. But, the framework is there, where if we needed to do that, we could.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good.
All right. So, with that, I'd like to invite Farah and Drew up, and they'll cover their portion of the risk management side of events.
And while they're getting situated, council, I'm going to just sidestep some formality here of raising your hand, because it's really hard to look when you really want to just ask a question and trying to get my attention, because I'm paying attention, too. So, please just feel, just break, and whoever raises their voice first gets the mic, and that'll be easier, and all of us, I think. Okay.
And you want to train us on Jurassic Park?
Well, I do have a, I have to.
You're breaking the rule.
Yes. And I am asking everybody here.
Okay.
Okay.
Just teasing.
First of all, I want to say thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing us to be here tonight to talk about special event best practices. Again, my name is Farah De Rosier, and this is Drew Bryan, and we are senior risk reps from Washington Cities Insurance Authority. And what I thought I would do is just kind of, just for anybody that's not familiar with Washington Cities Insurance Authority, just kind of explain to you like who we are. So, we're a municipal risk pool that provides liability, property, and auto coverage to over 160 cities and municipal agencies across the state of Washington. This presentation tonight is to discuss some best practices recommendations on ways to eliminate, if we can, reduce, or control the potential exposure created by organizing a special event. Every special event has different elements, so it's impossible to cover every scenario. When the city is wanting to operate a special event, it needs to consider the risks. To do that, you need to know the planned activities for the event. Are you guys going to have inflatables? Are you going to have fireworks, a parade, or other such activities? Once you have the activities planned, you can get an idea of the risks involved. Since special events can attract large crowds of people, and some activities may have higher risks than others, what you want to do is ask, could this event result in property damage to either your own property or private property? Could it cause injuries to participants, spectators, or even your own staff? And if something goes wrong, could it cause reputational risk? You really want to make sure you understand exactly what the event is and what all the elements are. With parades, we recommend members not allow parade participants to throw candy. It seems innocent enough, but the reason why we ask them not to do that is because we're concerned if a child will run out, try to pick up the candy, and could get hit by a float or a vehicle. Another concern we have when hosting a parade is having safe distance and placement between vehicles and people walking in the parade. WCIA recommends that vehicles and floats be at the front of the parade and have people walking follow behind. That way, there's no chance of them being hit by a vehicle or float like we have seen so oftentimes in the news. We had one member decide to no longer allow vehicles at all, and by making that decision has reduced their risk substantially. I thought it would be really helpful to kind of talk about some recent events where it resulted in some injuries. The first one I'm going to talk about is, should be kind of familiar, it's the Gate Harbor Maritime Parade. During the Gate Harbor Maritime Parade, five people were injured in a two-vehicle crash. The incident involved a van, a truck hauling a flatbed trailer, and five people walking between the two. The van suddenly accelerated forward, crashing into the people, holding the banner, and then hit the trailer. Another one was the Festival Lights Parade in Palm Springs. A police motorcycle crashed into the crowd, injuring 11 spectators. The officer was doing crowd control, as well as some demonstrations, when he turned around the backside of the car, lost his balance on the bike, his foot slipped off the peg. It caused him to have to grip the handlebars, which caused the bike to accelerate at a rapid speed, causing him to hit the spectators. And the last example I have for you of these events is during a holiday drone show in Florida, several drones collided and fell into a crowd, injuring a seven-year-old boy. The NTSB revealed that it was due to pre-show technical issues, software misalignment, and geofence failure. Due to this incident, it has raised broader questions about the safety of drone shows, especially in crowded spaces. One thing the city can do is where you can transfer your risk. If you can hire someone to handle the entire event for you, and the city can contractually transfer the risk, that would be ideal. When it is the city's event, make sure you're entering into contracts with all your vendors. Make sure that the contract has strong indemnification language, having the vendor agree to defend, indemnify, and hold the city harmless. Make sure they have appropriate levels of insurance, such as commercial general liability, auto liability, and other coverages if necessary, and have them name the city as additional insured. And also, be selective of the types of activities you allow at your special events. Like I said earlier, different activities have different levels of risk. We cannot, come on my hand today, we cannot discuss specific member claims, but what we can talk about is the cost portion of the claim, which is the defense. And so, I'm going to turn this over to Drew Bryan to present.
Good evening. So, to no surprise, cost of claims can get quite expensive in not only settling the claim, but in defending the claim itself. So, in some circumstances, there might not be any liability, and we can go ahead and deny the claim, which is great. In other circumstances, where members might be liable, we'll step in and we'll pay to settle and resolve the claims on behalf of the membership. Now, in the events that we deny a claim or that we're unable to reasonably resolve a claim, that individual has the right to file a lawsuit. And now, when they file a lawsuit, is when things get really expensive. So, not only are we paying for the defense costs of the claim, we're also having to hire various experts to defend our position in that claim itself. Most claims do get settled, but every once in a while, we do have a claim that does get all the way to trial. Now, what may be less obvious is going to be the strain that claims and litigation places on city staff. So, when a claim comes in, our internal claim staff will work closely with city staff in determining the facts and details of each loss to determine whether or not that claim has merit or liability, and we need to resolve that claim. From there, though, if the claim gets into litigation, it's going to cause a really big strain on city resources. Staff will have to fulfill discovery requests, which can oftentimes takes many hours. In addition, city staff will have to sit for various depositions. And then again, in those rare cases where we do get to trial, city staff will have to show up to represent the city throughout the duration of trial. So, ultimately, the risk pool, we assume the financial burden of claims and the defense of those claims, but that's the business that we're in. And then, in terms of time for staff, it's going to defer staff resources that could be spent elsewhere. Back to Farah.
Okay. I'm going to bring this home with one more slide. And we're going to talk about managing safety risks. So, managing those safety risks at special events is very crucial for several reasons. One, we want to prevent accidents and injuries. Events often include complex setup, such as stages, equipment, and crowd control measures. Proper risk management can help prevent accidents like falls, fires, equipment malfunction. We also want to minimize reliability. Proper safety measures reduce the risk of harm to attendees and staff, lowering the chance of lawsuits and claims related to negligence or unsafe conditions. And then, as I touched on earlier, that reputational risk. A safety incident can damage the reputation of an event or organizer. If something goes wrong, it can be a public relations nightmare. You will have news outlets contacting your staff and contacting council members, as yourselves, for comment, let alone pressure to discontinue the event, and we don't want to see that happen. Ensuring a safe environment helps to maintain public trust and ensure the success of Ensuring a safe environment helps to maintain public trust and ensure the success of future events. Managing your safety risk reduces, reduces the chances of expensive claims as well. The fewer claims the city has, the better it will be for the city. When members can reduce the amount of claims, the better it is for the member and the entire pool. Your loss run does impact your assessment and overall losses for the pool impact the ability to procure reinsurance and keep assessments low. In summary, effective risk management at special events ensures the safety and well-being of attendees, your staff and community while protecting the city legally and reputationally. I do want to say quickly, I really do appreciate the city staff for all the steps that they take to, they take extensive care with planning these events and following best practices. So thank you for that. And we want to open the floor for any questions.
Counselor Member Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Farah and Drew, thank you so much for being here tonight. I know this is a hot topic, not just for this council, but for any, any council that deals with events. I know, you know, when you attempt to mitigate risk for events, it tends to really polarize people strongly, either for or against having an event. And that really causes a lot of consternation, if you will, you know, with that. You know, when we talk about, you know, accidents happen, accidents are going to happen, no matter how, how hard you try to mitigate. And yes, we always want to mitigate ahead versus, you know, in the aftermath of something. But, you know, the thing that I struggle with a lot is, you know, the examples you give are exceptions. They're not the norm in an event. But when we hear those exceptions and we, you know, always want to step back and go, well, this could happen, that could happen, we shouldn't do anything. And, and so, you know, you, you find a lot of passion with people saying, oh, we shouldn't do anything because there's a risk. And I don't think that's what events, when you're celebrating, whether it be duck days or whatever the event is, people are there because they want to celebrate a cause or celebrate a reason for bringing the community together. You know, I heard you say tonight several times, these are recommendations, not requirements. And yet, that gets translated a lot when you hear a recommendation, suddenly it becomes a requirement. So, you know, I often say to people, take caution and use your best judgment and common sense when we're trying to put together the rules of engagement for an event. So do you have any words of wisdom to, to help guide us? I guess is where I'm going with my question here, in terms of just saying, well, we should do nothing and have no events and therefore we mitigate all our risk and all as well. Is there a middle ground that people can get to so we can have events and we can have fun? I know, I think it was last year, things got very passionate at our duck days, which is an understatement. And so, you know, and people became very, either very for or very against, especially over the candy issue. So is there, is there someplace we can go where you find a middle ground where you can have fun and you can have an event without this, oh my gosh, something could happen?
We can.
So, yeah, it's definitely a good question to ask in risk management. It's always going to be a process. And from what Lisa showed earlier, I think there was what, 11 events? So I mean, for the most part, the city knows what events work well for University Place, what events might not work well. So with Farah was talking about transferring the risks. So I mean, if you're bringing in food vendors, you're going to want to make sure that all of them have appropriate levels of insurance. One level of insurance you might not consider would be completed and ongoing operations. The big concern with food trucks is going to be the risk for foodborne illness. I think about a year ago, a local burger chain got in trouble for not cleaning out their ice cream machine and it made a few people sick. You want to avoid situations like that. But if you're entering into contracts with the appropriate vendors and making sure they have insurance that protects the city as an additional insured, it's going to be a best risk management practice. But like you said, Counselor Member Fleming, you're not going to be able to avoid every single accident. There's going to be unforeseen circumstances, but you can use good common sense and risk management to best manage these events.
Okay. You know, I, I know we live in a very litigious society and everyone's always looking for an opportunity. So I mean, every morning I wake up and get dressed, there's at least five or six commercials, "If you get injured, call me," out there. So, you know, I just, I know we always want to do the right thing for our communities, but we also want our communities to enjoy themselves and, and not have what I call a sterile event where, you know, you have a parade but no one can walk in it. You have an Oktoberfest, but you can't have any music and drinking because someone may fall off a stage or someone may, you know, spill a beer on someone. You know, we, we just got to, I, I struggle, I guess, if you hear my voice.
I hear you.
I struggle on, where is that median that we can get to where we can really have a good time but not have this shadow hanging over our heads all the time?
Well, you know, my recommendation for that is bring those concerns to the staff and then they'll give us a call and maybe we can figure out a way to meet in the middle on some of these items, these specific items. But there are some activities that just carry so much risk, like, I mean, I'm going to bring it up, but there's like, people are moving to this axe throwing. You know, they think it sounds exciting, they want to bring it, you know, there's a vendor that comes to your event, but I tell them, you know, I highly recommend against it. Have you heard of the bounce back? There's people that are getting, getting significantly injured when they throw the axe and it bounces back funny off the board and hits them in the back of the head. So I'm just talking like, you know, when you have these specific, there's so many fun activities out there that people are trying to come up with to make events more fun, but we just, we want to keep the people safe. We want them to have fun, but we want to keep everybody safe, your staff and the people that attend the event, so, and keep the city safe.
I will also add to that, you know, there is a number of staff hours for the, you know, various city hosted events. The more resources you have towards an event, the safer it's likely going to be, but that's going to take a whole lot more of staff resources. You know, if you're having an event out at the baseball fields over there and skate park, you're going to need staff on site. You're going to need to be there, you know, the day beforehand to look for any premise hazards and, and, you know, having additional sanitation and porta potties. And so just in general, the more resources you can put into these events, it's likely going to make them safer from a risk management standpoint. But that's your cost, cost benefit analysis, really.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Mayor Potem?
Thank you, Mayor. So a couple of questions. First, you said these are, as pointed out, that these are, you know, recommendations. Yet, as I recall, we were told last year, again, candy from a vehicle thing, you've heard about this, haven't you? That if we did that, WCIA would not cover the event. Was that true? Did I hear that correctly? Because that's not really a recommendation at that point. That's actually, that's, that's an enforcement saying, because we can't do an event without liability insurance. You know that, everybody knows that.
You guys are covered for liability, yes.
So, what I recall being told last year is that they would not, we would not be covered if we actually threw candy from the vehicle. And so I just want to make sure that we understand that correctly, what's, whatever happens this year, what the coverage is there, what the risks are, or understanding if we do have that liability coverage or not. So if we don't have an answer here, if we can get a follow-up on that, I'd very much appreciate it. Second, being a military person myself, or retired now, but have you ever heard of something called a commander's risk assessment?
No.
Okay. It's a tool the military uses because most of the operations the military does has an inherent level of risk. You jump out of a plane, there's going to be risk, no matter how good your parachute is. But what the military has is a process for assessing risk, mitigating risk and then identifying residual risk before they do an event. They just don't go leaping willy-nilly out of the plane. They check the parachutes, they go through extensive training, they do all these other things to make the event as safe as it possibly can be. Is there any way to introduce some sort of risk assessment, risk, formal risk assessment, risk mitigation process that would reduce potentially cost and liability insurance? Or for example, going back to the candy thing, you mentioned, hey, we put vehicles at the front of the parade. God, if we put vehicles at the front of the parade, can we start throwing candy right after the last vehicle? So you can't just ban candy throwing entirely, but it was like, we're assessing the risk, we decided we shouldn't do it from the vehicles, but we'll do it from the tail, the tail end of the parade. Is there any way to account for that, mitigate for that, so we don't have somebody just saying, you're throwing candy, there's no insurance, that kind of thing? Is there a process we can follow that would do something like that?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's fine.
I apologize.
I mean, ultimately, it comes down to is what is the city's level of comfort when it comes to risk? We have 160-plus municipal members. Some members absolutely hate risk and will not do parades because of the risks associated with parades. Other members, like City of University Place, may have parades, may want to do parades. And so, you know, ultimately, it's, you know, city staff and as well as council determine what level of risk you're comfortable with and understanding, you know, the risk associated and then what you can do to mitigate that risk, like placing vehicles in front and not throwing candy, you know, vehicles are going to be coming behind, things to that effect. So we don't necessarily have a system per se, but ultimately, it's a greater conversation.
Okay, because, and I think the city should actually, now that we're talking about it, maybe look into something like that. But I'm concerned about the liability portion of it. If we have a risk management plan for an event, would that reduce the city's costs and liability insurance or increase the likelihood that you would not say, we're not going to cover the event?
The city has liability coverage through WCIA. So I mean, the city can proceed with a special event. Ultimately, a loss, if there is a loss during a special event and it falls on the city, that would be calculated into the overall liability assessment, but it's like, overall, it's like a pie and it's just one slice of the pie that goes into the overall assessment. So it would be hard to say what the impact might be overall. So, you know, having a plan in place wouldn't necessarily reduce the overall cost. Hopefully, what you're reducing is the potential for a loss. But of course, if we prevent the loss, we'll never know if that's actually the case.
Well, that is the actual intent behind a risk assessment plan, is that you reduce the chance of a loss.
Right.
But I was just curious about the financial impact of it. So thank you very much for your time.
Before, we got two other council members. Before I move on to Ms. McCluskey and then Ms. Grassi, is that I'd like to have a comment here and that is, and it has to do with Mayor Potem. We do have, I mean, we, we got an email about the parade and candy throwing and all that. So, Mr. Kaiser, you, you and staff, someone determined that that was based on our, how we're covered, that we could, that, that's already all been determined, throwing the candy after the vehicles and all that, so.
There may be a pathway forward. However, as council goes through this, part of the discussion of risk is also, I'm trying to make sure I watch my words as I ask council to watch its words. If there is harm that necessarily befalls in the course of this, we, we guess wrong on the risk as the case may be. This study session gets played at a trial, you know, in that subsequent case. So as you have that discussion, what level of risk is necessarily acceptable, just bear that in mind. But we could do some additional follow-up to the Mayor Potem's point as well as to your point, Mr. Mayor, and track down some of those discussions from last year.
In the bottom line though, not this whole debate in that is that you're responsible to make that call. You're not asking, we don't get to vote on that.
Right. If you want to be.
You're just looking for feedback.
Yeah.
But at, at the end of the day, it's your call, how you want to run, with what risk.
Right.
Right? When I say your call, I mean the city's administration.
You're saying it falls on the administrative side as opposed to?
Correct. Is that true? Okay.
I would take that position, however, obviously, we would certainly take some cues from the council.
Correct. Okay. Good enough. Hopefully that helped. Counselor Member McCluskey?
Hey, thank you. Well, I have a, one, I have several questions, but first of all, how risky is a parade? Let's say no candy throwing, the vehicles are going first, you know, the participants are going after. How risky is that?
Well, I mean, just like with one of the examples that we had today, between, you know, there was people walking between two vehicles and, you know, they obviously followed too close.
That's one, one, one example. So on the, so we're calculating risk. So not based on one event, but what, how, how risky is a parade overall? So you're the insurers. You do the risk analysis. You have the actuaries that assess it.
So ultimately, it depends, what resources are you putting into the parade? Do you have a large enough area for staging? Do you have a designated area for disbending? Are you having participants sign waivers involved in the parade? Is staff making sure all vehicles that are involved in the parade have appropriate insurance levels? So all of that is going to take a lot of resources in determining. If you can complete all that, that's definitely going to lower the risk. I will tell you, from doing special event audits with our members from two years ago, not all cities or all of our members are equipped to go through that entire process and make sure that every individual involved in a parade has signed a participant waiver that would release the city from liability in the midst of a loss. So it really is, the answer would be depends on resources and involvement with city staff.
Do you readily get claims about parades?
Some, we've had claims about parades as well as other special events in the past, but from, I'm not in the claim stacking room, risk management, I did work in claims for about five years, but I am aware of at least one specific claim that was involved in a parade and some signage involved in a parade from last year.
Okay. All right. So not really sure, but you know, it is risky and we need to put, get our ducks in a row with paperwork and.
No pun intended.
Right. Right. We, we do have a technical review committee and I, I'm under the assumption that risk is, is talked about, liability is talked about. And so when I have an event in my city, I'm, I guess I'm talking to my staff, I'm assuming that that is done and that the element and the risk-taking is on the acceptable level via my city attorney, because that event is going forward, whether it's an event that's gone on for, for a few decades, as, as the duck parade has. I am assuming that it is a relatively safe event because it has gone through that technical review committee. I understand as a person that things are nominees and when large groups of people come together, things, things can happen.
It, it does undergo staff review. And a number of the points that WCIA made early on in the presentation in terms of obtaining releases, attempting to shift liability, those sort of things, those, those are kind of part and parcel of what we do in large part. And a lot of those discussions are the ones that we already have. So I, I don't want to speak too far out of turn, but I think in that regard, we're generally okay.
Okay. So that.
But there are some, there are some other aspects that we do focus on and otherwise have some discussions on. And we may end up getting to some of that later tonight.
Yeah. So that leads me into the other question. I'm talking about with different grassroots organizations that are interested in bringing events to University Place. And it, it meets all those criterias that we laid out, laid out, right? It's going to go through a TRC, right? However, it will, they're asking for our city's logo on it. So what as our insurer, because it isn't one of the 11 events, it's going to be a, something sparking up from the grassroots and not saying that they're professional. You know, sometimes they're not, sometimes they are. What, what is your perspective on, on that? Because we need to be really cautious for all the reasons you mentioned and reputation that and the quality of the event, then when we do put the city logo on it, because sometimes they're asking for our marketing, they're asking for our logo and they're asking for a transfer of liability.
So what we typically recommend, of course, this is coming from the perspective of your risk pool, either embrace it, make it your own event or completely divorce it. Once you start, you know, sponsoring or waiving insurance requirements, it's really kind of blurring the lines. And without having a contractor and agreement in place that, you know, clearly dictates, you know, the event sponsors or event organizers' responsibility versus the city's responsibility, if a claim comes in, it becomes a very much of a gray area and more often than not, that's going to fall on the city being the entity with a deep pocket in terms of just sponsoring an event, using a logo or, you know, providing sponsorship monies to fund the event. It would still be recommended that they still purchase commercial general liability insurance that names the city as an additional insured.
Okay. Right. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Member Grassi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of this may get into a little after, later into the, the presentation. So I want to just make sure, but I'm just reading on ahead and our issue and our solution that you laid out in the presentation. Are these solutions that staff has developed, run by? Are these solutions that staff has developed, run by, consulted with our friends here, or are these staff decisions that I've made? When I see, you know, the issue and the solution, which is very clearly laid out.
Yes. So this was in consultation with WCIA, but for example, and we'll get into it in a little bit more detail, staff is trying to find a happy medium. And so like if you look at the throwing candy, the person's like, "No candy," or those are just some options. I think we met after the presentation was completed, so we have an update that I'll be sharing, which hopefully will still allow candy and maybe some other healthy sorts of things, we're going to be a healthy city. But the option for folks to provide some giveaways, just not in and around the cars.
Okay. Because I think some of the frustration was, and I know that, you know, and I, again, I'm going to say, I really wanted a debrief, I never got to have a duck days debrief. So some of this is from that. However, there was a confusion when we heard, "No candy." I still haven't really got the clarification on Mayor Protem's question, which was, we were given direction that if we did throw candy, we would not be covered. And I still haven't quite got an answer of that, if that was accurate or not, if that is a true statement, or, so maybe you can answer that for me? I don't know.
So in terms of...
Last year.
Yeah. Liability coverage, the city would be covered. I will say, from my experience with events, and I have a four-year-old and a six-year-old who love parades, a very common practice, instead of throwing candies these days, many municipalities, is the fact that people walking will go and hand out either candy, necklaces, various...
So I think what we ran into, though, was then we had walkers and more people walking alongside moving vehicles, and those people in harm's way and getting, and then we also had all of our participants of the parade, not council members, that had vehicles as their advertisement, that also were throwing candy from their vehicle that was part of their advertisement for their business, their camp, et cetera. So at some point, I also want to say, you know, are we just, without the back and forth and being able to throw, what is the purpose of the parade? And what are we really wanting people to do in the parade? Is it just going to be walkers with the holding sign? You know, we had people holding signs that were by a vehicle, that were by a moped, that those were throwing candy. It just seemed a little, you know, "Don't do this, but you can do this, but we can..." It was just so across the board. So I was just asking if you have been consultant with these solutions that were placed, so that's helpful to know. And you said there's another presentation after, a re...
Yeah. So after WCIA, I think we'll get into more of the discussion that some of your counterparts have brought up.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. One more, I'm sorry, one more question. So I know that we do contract with a event firm, Wolf Events, I believe, Marion's on the line. What part of their coverage are they take on liability as far as duck days specifically? Does it nothing to do with the parade? When you say transfer liability to event producers, different organizations, does Wolf take on any of that liability, or where does that, her part, end and we start? Marion, are you online and are you able to answer Councilmember Grassi's question? Or actually, Leslie might be able to answer that.
They are at the Market Square. I am online. This is Marion.
Hi.
Wolf Events does not do parades. So Wolf Events is not involved in the parade. That is run by staff.
Okay. So their contribution to duck days is just here on property?
It's the festival, yeah. The Market Square festival area, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you for having us. It's really nice meeting all of you.
Are we good?
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, just have one.
Okay. Before I do that, I have Mayor Protem. Did you have one, right?
Just one quick follow-up, and this is actually more for staff related to this. On the code you just gave us on the sponsorship of third-party events, should we include something on there, like an item seven, that whoever is there should have independent liability insurance, or is that covered under a different part of our code?
Very well, maybe the next section of the code. I'm just double-checking.
Okay.
The next section of the code, "Any outside group seeking sponsorship may make application to the city. Such sponsorship shall take form of a written agreement to be approved by the city council. At a minimum, such agreement will require the group adhered to all relevant city policies, acknowledge the city as a co-sponsor in all materials and announcements regarding the event, and provide access to the public at no charge to the event. Where facilities are owned in whole or part by the city are utilized, such written agreements should include provisions for insurance, cleanup, and other provisions incidentally to the outside group's use of the facility."
Okay. So we're covered already?
We're covered in that regard. And then, yeah, and then just one minor amendment. I did go through a poll or website after I've been responding to Councilmember Grassi and Fleming's question. We do have sponsorship and donations page. It's outdated and does not reflect the current updates from a year ago.
Thank you.
Councilmember McCluskey.
All right. Thank you. That's exactly the same topic I was going to bring up. I think when we bring up the criteria for the sponsorships, that all those details should be pointed out, because that may save them time submitting an application if they did not want to be responsible for certain things or pay for their own liability insurance. I think just get it out there. And also, I noticed on some other cities' websites that in their application of all their criteria, which you had just so eloquently, you know, discussed a few moments ago, they have a link to an insurer, a recommended insurer, if the person so decided to use that. That way, that one stop, they could get a quick estimate.
Yeah, and I think council, was it last meeting, when we talked about park reservation policy, we provided that information to council, and in the course of the webpage updates, we may provide a link there as well. We're going to want to meet internally, just in terms of what we do next, in terms of how do we message it.
All right. Thank you.
I will add as well, we work with a partner called Gather Garden, and they provide special event insurance for people or special event organizers. Makes it a streamlined process.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you. Don't run away. Come back here. You thought you were getting away. You still have another two hours. My first disclaimer is I'm not an attorney, but you got me thinking when the question of logos came up, and I think, Drew, you said, "Well, the solution is just don't partner with them, just let them do their own thing and keep the city out of it." But there's the deep-pocket theory of why, right? And so if you have an event in the city, like, let's say, someone decides to have a 3K, 2K, 5K, whatever it is, and the city's not involved in that, and there's an injury, we're still on the hook, are we not?
I wouldn't say on the hook. I would say something like that, maybe, I think as a personal injury attorney, or recovering personal injury attorney, you might say, it's a target-rich environment.
Yeah. So the point I'm trying to make is, you can't say, "Well, just don't put your logo there and we're off the hook." I don't think that's the right answer. I think we just have to, even for those non-sponsored events that are in the city, the city still needs to have some kind of, at least touch on that and mitigate that. So that's my point on that. So, thank you. Now you all can go.
No, 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 you're not ready. I haven't spoken yet. So...
I just wanted to touch on what Councilmember Fleming was asking. Even if it's not a city-sponsored event, they have to fill out a special event permit, and that permit lists everything they're going to have, and then that comes to, it gets routed to risk, police, fire, and we respond with, "All right, in order to do this event in our city, you need to do this, you need to have this police coverage, you need to have insurance. If you're having food vendors, you need to have insurance." So they aren't putting our logo on their advertising, but in order to have an event here in our city, they still have to do a permit and get recommendations by the various parts.
I totally agree with that, Leslie. I just heard our insurer, though, earlier, say, "Yeah, just distance yourself and you're okay," and that kind of concerned me.
Ms. Blaisdell, before you leave, I have several comments and questions and clarifications panel, but don't leave yet, Lisa. The whole panel wants to leave. Now you know, no, I hope we're not that loud. Ms. Blaisdell, I just want to, on the 273, 273,000 that was mentioned, does that include the estimate for the 30th anniversary? No?
It does not. That event was added after the project was adopted.
Right, correct. So, and that's the major question right now, okay? But council, again, we haven't heard, by the way, real quick before I move on, and that is, Lisa, one of the things I was looking forward to in community events was our 30th anniversary. I don't see anything here that's...
It gets its own special study session April 7.
April 7. Okay. Boy, okay. That being said, back to my comment about the cost of community events, if you, 273, that's above 24, and looks like it's going to be closer to that, and it's not even counting the 100,000 plus for the anniversary. So we're at 300 and maybe up 400,000 for community events. I'm sorry, guys, but that's just a lot money that, for our city and everything, that's just overindulgence in my mind, just overindulgence of fun. That's not even counting the, we went from nowhere recreational program for a very particular reason, we don't have the money. It went from 250,000 to 250,000 to now, I think it's at half a million. You put those together, we're coming to half, close to a million dollars worth of fun. It's becoming, in my mind, an issue. I didn't say "we," I said "I." It's an issue, and it needs some serious conversations. It really does. We need to give direction to our council on behalf of our citizens. Is this what you want us to spend our tax dollars on, your tax dollars on? And maybe a survey or something, but let me just speak, and I'll get to you. It's a serious, for me, it's very serious. You can laugh about it, you can, but I can tell you right now, it's a very serious situation when we're just bloating on events. And some of these need to be questioned, even the run. I didn't understand that we were spending 22,000 on the run. Most of those people are from out of town. So we're spending 22,000 plus, whatever staff is, over 30,000, so the majority of the people from outside of our city. So our citizens are paying for others to have fun here. I have a problem with that, and I think it warrants a serious discussion about where we're heading, where we're at with, I call it serious money. And see where it really, what events really promote UP to UP residents and the cost of it. You know, you got maybe, you know, if you start dividing some of those, the cost of some of the numbers that is actually a 10, it gets pretty costly. So I hope that you guys will, when I say you guys, this council really starts thinking in that direction, and when we pass the next budget, it's too late now, or we can actually amend it and reduce the cost by hundreds of thousands of dollars. But I think I really feel, I've been in the city for 33 years, on the council for 16 years, I think that if I was, I know my citizens quite well, just as much as you do, I can tell you right now, they'll be like gasping at the cost of what we spend for community events and without a real serious discussion. So at least we should give that a serious discussion for our citizens, if we're doing the right thing. Anybody else? Okay. Oh, yes. Councilmember McCluskey?
I would like to know, Mayor, how as a council member sitting on a dais, can get your attention to put my name on the list? I did not try to interject or interrupt you. I've seen other council members do the same thing many times. Is that not correct, fellow council members? Yes. So please tell me how to get your attention to put my name on your list, so that I could speak.
I have. You don't have to give me that look. I have.
But this last time was very rude. I just put my finger up, and you...
Well, I was still talking.
Okay.
I was still talking.
All right.
So you were interrupting. You want me to interrupt myself or you? That's not going to happen.
Okay. Well, I think we can do this offsite.
Okay.
And Councilmember Fleming can join me, because he's noted that as well. All right. So let's move on.
Thank you.
So the event is going to be an anomaly this year because of the 30th. So we have a projected budget, so, you know, it's kind of gray and fuzzy, but when we were in our retreat, it was well over 100 grand, 150 grand, I heard. So that's not the appetite for this council. It's getting towards the deadline for the 30th. We need to really seriously regroup and get a budget that everybody is agreeable to. I'd like to know what our events budgets were prior to COVID, when we had to cancel all of our events, and to how we're staffing up with the events right now. I could look at this list, and my eyes go to Twisted Cider Run, 300 participants for over 22,000. So I concur with the mayor that we need to look at our expenses, who participates, and if we want to keep those events going, and if we do, how we can beef up some of the participants in some of these events that are in low attendance. Thank you.
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Boykin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question very well may help provide some insight to numbers, period. I was wondering, is there an after-action review that takes place on behalf of those that are assessing risk? And I also want to know, is there any expectation of that data being used for proactively having conversations with city council about subsequent events that either may be planned or that we may choose to consider, any after-action review that takes place and all?
So Councilmember Boykin, in answering your question regarding if there's an after-action sort of meeting or report that occurs, there's a general one where staff has included in reviews, complaints or issues, go over things that went well, things that can be improved for the next time around. I think I heard you mention in your question, including an after-action assessing the risk. Did I hear that correctly, or...
That is correct. And I'm alluding to, if there is a resource that actually observes all the things that took place as part of a service that we have, we can then provide an analysis of, here is what the opportunity costs, and here is what was avoidable and was avoided. We also can use that as a teaching opportunity for helping us figure out better ways to have events that not only mitigate the risk, but more creatively be able to interject the fun and the experience that helps drive our residents and citizens to these events. I think in that effort, there's an opportunity to see an economic impact that is also quantifiable based upon the same sort of measures and metrics that can be employed as a result of actually having someone skilled observing the entire event with the sole reason for being able to talk and tell to me about numbers and talk about risk, as well as talk about what we can offer our residents, so that they can be sure if there is a number that quantifies for fun, that they can live with it, they want the council to actually support, we've got good data to help them move to a place that gives illumination to everybody involved.
Yes, Councilmember... Yes, Councilmember Boykin, that's really good insight, and I think we'll take that back to staff and see how we can find some data points that we can actually measure that meet some of the recommendations that you just stated.
Thank you.
You're good, Mr. Boykin?
Mr. Mayor, that does conclude my question. Thank you so much.
Okay, and Mayor Boettman?
Thank you, Mayor. First, before I get started, my questions are more related to our events and costs and not risk and insurance, so if there's nobody else who has a question on risk and insurance, I say we let the WCIA go, but I'll yield the floor if there's anybody else.
They want to...
Okay, I think we're good there, then. So just, I did a quick, I don't know if you all saw me playing on my calculator on my phone here a little while ago, but I was just doing math here on your event breakdown, and just the three events that stuck out in my mind were, well, Parks Appreciation Day, Music on the Square, and Twisted Cider Run, because they all had costs in the eighties per person attending the event. That's a combination of the budget plus the staff hours combined. So like, Twisted Cider was eighty-eight dollars, Music on the Square was eighty-four dollars per participant, that's including using the eight-hundred number, not the one-hundred, and the Parks Appreciation Day, which is, since it only had twenty participants, apparently, was eighty-nine dollars per person. As a point of comparison, Duck Days was about thirty-five dollars. Concerts in the Park and the Community Harvest Station combined, I combined them here, too, they're thirteen dollars per person. National Night Out, two bucks a person, though I would question the amount of staff time we put into that, because I don't even think it includes law enforcement, so that may be, go up quite a bit, depending. Anyway, I got the numbers here, and I'm sure you guys can run much more accurate ones. This is very quick, you know, back-of-the-phone math. But that might be something we want to look at as an evaluation criteria going forward, is how much are we spending per person on a particular event, not just overall total cost? Because that would be one way to measure, I guess, the amount of fun or amount of community we're buying with what we're doing. So thank you. That concludes my comment.
Anyone else? Oh, Councilmember Worthington?
Thank you, Mayor Figaro. So I also did the math in that same venue, and I know, you know, these are estimates in terms of participants and the rest, but you can see where some values are, and I think it's worth us thinking about the cost per head, if you will. Some of these will have other benefits besides our citizens, and we do want to reach beyond the borders of UP, to help bring people in, to do business in our restaurants, in our grocery stores and the rest. So those are some other benefits that are not going to be quantified here, but this gives us some, at least, initial look at how things go. So, but perhaps some other time, we have more things yet tonight to talk about with special events.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, I think we're done. I would ask staff, did you get enough feedback?
We have one more slide to get through.
Oh, excuse me. Okay. We talked about the parade so much that I thought it was embedded in there. Go ahead.
Right. So we did have one other staff meeting after this, so wanted to slightly update the information that's on the screen. I think the message coming from staff is, like council, we want to help strike a balance. People enjoy events, so we want to make sure that they're still, you know, very enjoyable for the community. So after discussion with WCIA, specifically to the Duck Days Parade, we do still want to allow folks to drive, but it has been recommended, and we would like to abide by the recommendation of having cars go first, and then all the walkers follow after, which is how it has been done before. So no real changes there. The only change is no candies being thrown from the car, as Councilwoman McGrassi, you had, or distributed from the cars, you had explained, you know, at that point, where we are putting folks in danger that are handing those out. But we would like the opportunity to still have candy given out. We heard from council that that was something that was important, and so staff recommendation is to have the walkers in the parade be the ones to hand out whatever they would like to hand out, whether it's candy or fruit, or they might have some cool little toys and things for the kids, but that be the place where folks can then get things. I think what happened at the parade last year was, because it was candy also given out, there was a narrowing of the parade path towards the end, and so there was some greater concern about pedestrian safety there. So that would be the recommendation. Additionally, staff will be placing more staff at the staging area, that was another concern, that we had heard from council and from participants, that there needs to be more staff that help with the timing of the parade, because there were some time gaps between cars and walkers, and there were some lags in the parade. And so having more staff to ensure that there's folks that remain on time and keep good pace for the parade is going to be a recommendation. So we would like to have more staff there, in addition to an additional officer. Did you want to speak to that?
And in addition to timing, some of the issues we had, you know, was the cars go first, no throwing candy from the cars, you can have a couple people walk beside and pass out. We had whole groups of walking groups who said, "That car's with us, we're just going." And you've got two finance people saying, you know, so we had, so if we wanted to have more staff there to control that, because we just had groups saying, "We're going, we don't care what you say."
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to go here, and now it's just going down the line. Councilmembers Worthington?
Thank you. Good. All right, well, it's good to have some aspect for us to talk about this in a variety of ways and terms of council, and I appreciate the staff's efforts to debrief this event that's now ten months old, or maybe not quite that old, eh, no, about ten months. So, and I appreciate that timing, one of my observations was also about timing, after I got out of the car and saw how the parade was doing, there were long gaps where, and by thinking further about how to set that pace, that can make some sense here. There's a number of things we needed, the previous year, organization around the start was challenging, and really, really, I think the issue I ran into was, there was conflicting information, it was given out a day or two before, and it just really upset the apple cart. So with enough lead time, we've got sixty days, which is almost enough, not quite, but maybe if we try hard, we could help get things settled in. I know where I was with the Corvette folks, they had received no information about any change in candy at all, and so they, that took them by surprise, and that caused a fair amount of a truffle in our little world that I was in, and we all got over that in a few hours. But it was just, you know, there were some communication issues, the timing of that, I'm sure we all have things we can add. I would, while I would be sorry to see candy removed from the council vehicles, I don't see any way that that's reasonably in this proposal going to go forward. And then I would ask, who's going to buy the candy? Because council, I mean, we might all chip in for some sort of central candary fund a mile behind us, but we've individually bore that expense happily, for the most part. And, yeah, so it just is a different design, but we need some time to think about what that design looks like, and how the council members choose to deal with that. So those are just some of my initial reactions, so.
Okay, so Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to continue that dialogue. I appreciate what the staff has done here to try to put, I hope this is something on the table for conversation and not cast in concrete, and I appreciate where we're trying to go with it. But when I read, and I think the throwing candy is going to be probably the toughest of all these recommendations for the council to really, you know, build consensus around, but when I read, like, "no candy," that's a nonstarter, I'll just tell you right up front.
Yeah.
And then it says walkers only with wagons, so we're going to bring two, three hundred people with wagons, that isn't going to work. You know, I don't understand that, if we're mitigating risk, the difference between wagons and people carrying a bag and then passing out candy from a bag, which I think is far less riskier than two, three hundred wagons carrying candy. And then this one about the, you have to name who the candy handler is. Who knows? How do you do that? I mean, when you've got, you know, hundreds of volunteers that are out there for a candidate or for a cause or for a business, I don't know how you name who the candy handler is and who's not. I would just say, good luck, because we're going to need a whole bunch of staff to try to figure that one out, and that's, in my opinion, not worth the money to invest in that. And then where it says you can only have candy thrown on the west side, well, my experience has been, is we have a lot of residents on the east side, so we're going to give to one side of the parade and say, you know, "Too bad, so sad, you're on the west side, you get nothing." I just don't see how we're going to mitigate that.
Yeah, these were just ideas, so, you know, these aren't...
I hope these are starting points and not endpoints for conversation.
They are, they are, Councilmember.
Okay. So, you know, I'm just kind of putting these on the table and really kind of highlighting them, because I do believe that before, you know, we were asked to say, "Here's our final recommendation," at least I hope there's going to be a conversation, you'll say, "Here's our final recommendation to council," you know, yea or nay, that we do have a little bit more conversation. And then to Councilmember Worthington's point, that we, you know, let people know what the rules of engagement are far enough advanced so that we're not showing up on parade day, and suddenly you got five or six different people passing out the rules. I think that's what really ignited the crowd, you know, last year, is because no one was on first, and everybody was tossing out the rules, and so. So that's my comments for now, and I'm sure I'll have more later as we talk about this, so thanks.
Yeah, I wanted to speak to that, about knowing the rules, we're trying to figure out a way, because a lot of groups register, so one person registers for the group, and they get the packet that has all the rules and all the stuff, and if they don't share that with the other members of their group, so we're trying to figure out how we do that, whether, if it's something like a car club, maybe each car has to register so that, or we get their contact information, so that the reminder letter that we sent out a few days before was just reminding of all the things they signed when they first registered, but we realized that in a lot of those groups, the person who signed it and got the email wasn't necessarily passing that along to all of the people in their group.
Well, I think the challenge you have, Leslie, is, on parade day, and I'll use candidates, for example, you know, when they're out being passionate about their candidate, you don't know who's going to show up to support you. You just put out this broadcast saying, "I need help, we need walkers, we need candy carriers and throwers," and so you go to bed at night saying, "I hope people will show up for me," and then you get this beautiful crowd that shows up the next day. You don't know. So if we're trying to get a feel for what it's like before parade day, I think in the majority of instances, you know, whether it's a business or a candidate, we're not going to know, they're not going to know on there, and we can't tell someone, "Well, now you can't walk with these people because we didn't know." I mean, that's not going to work either.
And we have extra forms, we realize that there are going to be walk-up people at our registration desk, we have the extra forms. I walk down to each of the vehicles on the Twenty-seventh Street to verify their insurance, verify their driver's license, and, all right, who has signed up? Oh, this person joined you, we need this waiver signed. It's a very labor-intensive time leading up to registrations and then on registration day. Part of the struggle we've had the last couple of years since we lost the use of the...
Bartel's lot?
Bartel's lot. Everything's so separate. We've got the regular vehicles lining up on Twenty-seventh Street, the walkers are at the staging area at the church, and then last year, to make things easier, the Corvettes were lined up on Twenty-eighth Street, and so that created a difficulty in getting to them. Staff, I think, was like, "Well, the Corvettes, they're here every year," you know.
Mm-hmm.
They got the information, and really, they should have, that should have been a stop as well, to speak to each and every driver, as we do to all the other drivers. But that, being separated, has created a little bit more difficulty, which is why we're saying we need more staff at the start, because we can't cover all three areas and make sure everybody gets what they need.
You're good, Mr. Fleming?
I'm good, thank you.
And one other item to mention, Councilmember Fleming, in regards to communication, I think something new that staff has begun to talk about is, as the registrations come in, having some meetings with these folks ahead of time, right? So not all the information you just shared, like the day before or at the event, but actually scheduling times for those participants to come in, either virtually or with staff, so that we can explain, okay, on parade day, this is how it's going to run, this is the map, this is what to expect, this is the time, these are the rules, all of those things. So I think that's something new that staff would like to create this year and implement, and see if that helps.
Okay. Councilmember McGrassi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo my thoughts, many of them, Councilmember Fleming expressed, as far, it's good to hear these are just starting off points of conversation, and not, thus saith the Lord. I, I can't help it, I'm a pastor in my day job. I do think, you know, staff, I am very, you know, thoughtful of the budget, the numbers that this takes, I echo some of the budgetary concerns that the mayor brings forward and others. I also think this is a great opportunity to get back to volunteers for our city. Our city was built on volunteers. The fact that we have our finance director trying to go down to each car on a side is crazy to me. That's a very expensive employee to have, talking to our parade participants. I think that this could really be a great opportunity for volunteers to be involved and bring some of that contingency back, so that we can do more and be able to communicate better. I have also been on the other end of filling out one of those forms, they're very cumbersome, whether it's with a church group or kids, you don't know all of the kids that do show up or don't show up, and Tommy's sick, and this person's coming, it's very difficult to get all of that. It's very cumbersome, and I would love to see us a way for staff and for the participants to streamline that process. Maybe it's one community meeting, maybe it's online, everyone that's involved on Duck Days, log on at this time, and we're going to have all of the information, make it a little bit more streamlined, I would love to see that. I also want to know, have we spoken with Silicon for some of their suggestions? Their Fourth of July parade is extraordinary and a longer route than us. My kids are delighted at all of the candy that is thrown and gathered and between vehicles and all of the different things. It would be wonderful to know if we've consulted with them at all, because they have a fabulous program.
I believe the Silicon Parade is one of those transfer the risk situations, someone else runs the parade, it is not run by the town Silicon that I'm aware of.
It would be interesting, huh, I filled out the form and sent it to the City of Silicon as a participant, but no. Well, it'd be interesting to know, and what the cost for that, yeah, because it was well-done, again, a longer route, I would, you know, tons of people, it's Fourth of July, lots of vehicles, lots. They also had a rope along their line of, you know, on each side of the street, so that was also a great way for parents to know, stand at the rope. I think that's something that we could easily add in.
Excuse me, Councilmember McGrassi, I'm sorry, I have to do a point of order. We're at nine oh two. I would like to move to extend our meeting by another fifteen minutes.
We were actually to nine thirty.
Yeah.
Was that changed? Oh, I apologize, never mind, please go on.
Thank you. That was just one thing, that, you know, the rope, but also, and back to the financial piece, you know, the why of this, I think, you know, if we had a clear, and perhaps we do a clear mission statement, why our events are, if they're for X, Y, and Z, we want them to be safe, we want them to be free, we want them to be inclusive, we want them to, what do they, we want them to bring to our community that we can also put that dollar sign, because lots of things aren't quantifiable by dollar amount. You know, there are lots of things that these events do, community engagement, safety, business thriving, but if that, if that big why was in front of us, I think that also would help council kind of make hard decisions as far as costs. Again, I'd love also to see our, this is specific to this parade, but I would love, one more plea to add, our seniors, University Place graduating seniors, I hear all the time from vote... I hear all the time from folks that due to COVID, we had that graduation parade, which was wonderful. I'd love to see that incorporated into Duck Days to our community to celebrate our graduates. That's a huge accomplishment. We're proud of our schools. I think that could be another why for our parade. But yes, volunteers, still, um, that, those are all my questions. Thank you so much.
Great point. You're good?
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone over here?
Okay.
Councilmember McCloskey?
All right, thank you. Are we going to come circle back and have another study session to discuss some of these things, especially the candy throwing and the candy handler and some of these ideas so that I know whether to order a ton of candy or not, or how that's going to go, or do I need to buy a wagon to go behind the Corvettes? And I, I'm not sure how that's going to, I can't picture how that's going to actually work.
That's a great question. So we'll confer with the city manager and get back to that.
Okay, thanks.
I have to put my candy order in in thirty days is actually what is the practical issue.
Yeah.
Where do you order from? A very special level.
Secret point. Okay. Oh, Mr. Boykin, would you have any comments? Okay, just in case these voices trying to get going here, Mayor Portem, anymore?
No, I, I do not.
Oh, go ahead.
There he is.
Councilmember.
No, I, I do not. I, I hear some really important questions about how do we front load for what we ultimately going to do when it comes to candy as well as participation. And I do remember filling out that form that was very cumbersome. And so I'm, yes, excited to hear about the possibility of if we transferred the risk to another party because if the cost or the numbers that we've underscored tonight are in fact what we've been working with typically, then there, there should be a consideration for a second option that, that could not be cost prohibitive, basic point, numbers perhaps that have been, again, identified tonight.
Okay. Are you good, Mr. Boykin? I'll take that as a default, yes.
I understand.
Okay. Okay. If you want to just say something, then we'll, we'll capture your, any other comments. I do have a comment here and that is that the transfer, again, cost, I don't know what, maybe that's really nice, but maybe if they're charging a hundred and fifty thousand, I don't know. I mean, I think that's, that's something that has to be thought through. I see that the cost for ours is basically around sixty-nine, let's say seventy thousand. The way we're talking of adding more staff, et cetera, it could be closer to ninety, maybe, a hundred. So let's, let's look at the cost of, to transfer this and, and with some guideline, obviously it may be, I'll ask Mr. Kaiser, is that would, would he, would we need to pass a resolution or some kind of ordinance as to how the transfer person or a company would act on our behalf or is that administrative?
Neil, I would think we would probably, and I don't know if we'd even have enough time for Duck Days twenty twenty-five. I'm being told no.
Correct.
On this, I would imagine that it'd be some sort of RFP slash RFQ type process that we would put out and see qualified parade organizers and then depending on what comes with that, bring a contract back to the council.
Okay, so just on that note, you're absolutely right. So for council, we need to settle this for ourselves, this, this Duck Days and make it as, as what we can do with it and then start looking at, at, at next year, you know, and all of the, with all the details. The other thing is, that was one more big issue. I know you're, staff, you were talking about have an extra personnel and even an extra police person as people took off, make sure that they, they obeyed. But the, a big part, which was kind of insinuated here, and that is that during, during the parade, people really basically just stopped. I mean, actually, Mayor Portem, we finished and I'm saying, where's everybody else? He says, oh, they stopped a long time ago. So I ran, literally, I didn't run fast, but I ran up that hill and I looked and I walked some more and there were, they were way down there. It wasn't like, and I'm saying, what the heck? So I went way up there and people were just chatting. Literally, they was just talking and, you know, whatever they were doing, having a little barbecue. And, and finally, you know, they got to moving, but they was like two blocks easy. So we need at least a coordinator or two because people are not behaving, they're stopping or someone's going too fast and they're not keeping that distance that you would like in a parade. And I think that's a huge one right there. And not only for, you know, looking, it looks silly, it really looked silly, not only looking good, but I think it, it would contribute to the safety because now people are hurrying up and all those kind of things. And so people are getting anxious because they're going out, literally, we have people out in the street looking at what's going on. So I think that that would contribute to a better, safe environment. So, okay. I don't have anything else. And, and just to, you know, just to make sure we, we understand, it sounds like council still likes to know, to get your input. You got, we gave you input, now give us some input and then hopefully we can say, yes, we agree or no, we really don't agree. And, and I know it's administrative from what I heard, but I think that, you know, okay, so, so I think that we need to understand what, how much we can instill in this without breaking the bank and, and not having liability. So, Mr. Worthington?
Thank you. Couple of things. Mr. Kaiser, is, anything about Duck Days illegal?
Duck Days being illegal? I would not say illegal.
Okay, then it is not a matter of you telling us that it's illegal. No, it's rather, then not you, but the administration.
Okay, I'm just making sure because I don't think I said.
Yes.
I can make all sorts of duck jokes, but they aren't illegal either.
Right, but the, I mean, my, my point is that there's, there's some aspect of policy here. And I think the policy turns in how much risk are we willing to accept? I think I heard that five times tonight. And it's, that's a policy question. So we get to interpret that. We don't, I don't have enough information to do that quite yet. I think there's options, but I'm not hearing enough options or enough detail, in my view, to be able to get there.
I agree.
So, and we have, we do have some options, but we really haven't had much opportunity as a council to talk about this. And even though we have almost sixty-six days or some such thing, it, it seems that gets upon us once again. So I'm trying to figure out a way to, to fix that and to get some further information in the time that isn't available. So for me, I just would need to think about, do we put, you know, how do we deal with candy issue? And we all are, are struggling with that. There's other practical aspects to it, but really it's the risk aspect that's the one that needs to be thought of. And then we can build out the practical issues around that. So Mayor, I'm, I, I'm not ready to do anything on this, though there's lots to be thought about. I just don't feel as though we have enough information, or at least I don't have enough information yet.
And Mayor Portem raised his hand. If I may, Mayor Portem, to make a follow-up on this?
Sure, it's, it's related. First, I agree, don't have enough information yet, but we are down to the wire already. Sixty days will go by very quickly. And I, and I hate to rub salt in it, but this is why we were asking for an after action ten months ago because we knew there'd be issues that would have to be solved and it really looks like we're here, we are ten months on and we're just now trying to figure it out. So I would appreciate some effort put into this very quickly on the part of staff to, again, to do it. Councilmember Worthington was suggesting is let's do a, a policy, a risk of said policy and let's, let's start moving forward from there and then come back to, I don't know if you even need to ask permission from council, but we at least need something to work with as far as guidance because again, we're going to be ordering, you know, way too much candy or not. And there's other things we'll be looking at as well. I think we need something more specific to work with. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, Councilmember Fleming?
Did you have a question?
I see your hand up.
All right, thanks, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I just want to echo those comments. You know, I think the council asked several times last year for after action, never got it. And now we're rapidly approaching the eleventh hour and we're being asked to make decisions in a void once again, and that really concerns me, I'll be honest with you. I would ask, I don't know what the next month's agenda or next council member or council meeting's agenda is, but maybe if we can find a space for this, I, I think we need to put this on a fast track and have.
I agree.
Have some conversation and come to some conclusions and some decisions to Councilmember Worthington's point, really make a determination of how much risk we're willing to accept. I, I'm not one who says we have an event with no risk because that means no fun in my, in my head. But we've, we've got to determine what, what's palatable and then make some decisions and move forward. But I really dislike, I'm going to be candid with everyone, I dislike being pushed into a corner to make a decision in a void of information when we've had plenty of opportunities to, to have that information. So my plea to the mayor and for scheduling is to let's, let's find a place on the next agenda and continue this dialogue.
Yeah, I do have something.
I try to give everybody at least two chances before I speak on a particular subject.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And so I do, and I have, I've counted, you know, I give everybody two chances, at least usually it should be one, but I've given it twice this time.
Okay, got it.
Okay. To answer that, is, is, this is difficult, like Councilman Worthington said, I mean, sixty days, I mean, we don't have, and they have to plan. Can I just suggest to try to narrow it down, what we can work with staff to get this going so they can move on? One is the process and how people get on the street and stay intact, right? And all that. I think that's, that's, that's a non-issue. I hope anybody disagrees with that, if that's a policy. I think that's just a non-issue. They shared with us a better ways, we shared with them about maybe how to also improve that process. If I heard everybody correctly, it's really about the liability. I mean, is the liability about the candy, really? I mean, I didn't hear much about the liability of other things that are happening because we heard them about how they're going to help with that and, and, and straighten that out. The candy, they, they, their preferences for us and their, in their view is to have it behind the cars or, or something like that. We're saying, most of us are saying, we want to throw the candy out the car. That's basically what I'm hearing. Is that what you're hearing, everybody? So, yeah, it's about the candy thrown out the car. If we can just, so that, I'm trying to narrow it down for all of us so that they have time, they only have so much time to get everything straightened out. So if it's about that and it, and we're there seeing that we, most, most of us want to throw out the car, just pow out and come back to a decision. And if we disagree, if it's just the opposite, if we disagree, I guess we'll have to have a special session and, and vote on it or something for direction. I mean, and so getting to your part, Mr. Fleming, is that if it comes to that, then a special session, I don't see how we can wait so long for the next study session. It's just too short. So I, I think that we do a study session to resolve this and so they can move on.
I'm okay.
Because they have to contact a lot of different people what they can or cannot do. Is that fair enough? Okay, Ms. McCloskey?
All right, thank you. Special session, I'll, I'll, I'll concur to that because sooner, the sooner the better. I see here we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven issues. There's apparently some issues around bus routes on Bridgeport, porta potties, and it seems like that you have a pathway forward on that. My concern is because we're here talking about this publicly and the issues around the candy throwing and also the gathering of the people on the east side of, of the street not staying, whether we throw the candy or not, they're encroaching. So I would like to, we've been doing this for many, many years and apparently there are some safety concerns that I was not totally aware until there was pointed out. So the people on the east side and the west side, looking, I'm, I'm looking at making sure that, that they remain safe and they stay where they, they need to stay first and foremost as, as the parade proceeds. Second issue would be the, the candy and how to safely do that. And the candy to stay around the vehicle that purchases the candy, that, that it's aligned somehow so that they know where the candy came from. You know, it's kind of, maybe it's a selfish way to, way to look at it, but if, you know, I'm spending two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars on candy so I can make sure that that candy lasts throughout the whole parade, I like to let them know that it came from my car. And when cars pass, the participants do expect the candies to, to be available as they had in the past, so it, it still would make sense that that logic and, and that alignment would, should stay intact. Unless you can figure out another creative way to do that, I, I don't know. But that's my thoughts here, but some of these other things, I think it's pretty much on, on the staff level, notifying the bus routes and some of those other things, except for those couple of things because I, as a council member, participated in the parade knowing now we had issues here. I don't want to be a part, a participant in, in the parade as a council member and not having that resolved. Thanks.
Mayor Portem?
And then just one thing on this list of issues, actually, the mayor brought this up originally, but I just wanted to make sure it gets added. The gaps in pacing of the event, it's actually not listed as an issue, but it was actually a very big issue, especially after the second Corvette, there was a gap of almost half a mile to the last one by the time we hit the end of the parade. So I would, I would like to see that one addressed as well. Thank you.
I don't see any other hands? Okay, so I just lost track because I was trying to follow up on Councilmember McCloskey's point and I just lost it here, so excuse me. Well, it must have been something I could talk to you about. Remember, we have, we have an option to help staff it to, you know, staff can actually call any one of us and say, can you just clear one more thing? And, and we can do the same thing to expedite a, a one-team effort here. So hopefully we'll have some communication between both sides so that we can, so when they report, we're probably can get closer a lot quicker instead of waiting till we get together. So I encourage any communication between staff and council and, and vice versa. And I think that in, in, as soon as, you know, tomorrow or something like that, as soon as, Steve Seg, I know you're, you're listening, so I'm sure that you, you will be able to get back to maybe even just a council as a whole, say, hey, this is what we're looking at, you know, give us feedback, I don't know, if that's the best way you want to communicate staff. But I think it's important, I agree, that it has to be done sooner than later and I'm persisting proposing as much communication so that we get back and just make, be able to make a decision and not be frustrated over this.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so anyone else? Oh, Mr. Boykin, I want to give you the, oop.
Oh, you might dart.
Mr. Boykin, I want to make sure I didn't ignore you and left you out or interrupted you or anything else.
No, you did not. Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for double check, but I'm fine, I appreciate it.
Okay. Oh, I see if, Councilmember Grassi, were you?
Thank you, Ms., yes. I just have a quick question for Leslie because I know that just on the Winterfest, on that number is a little higher than normal because we are purchasing a new tree. Is that what I heard?
Correct.
Where is the other tree going?
It is going to be surplus. We're going to put it on public, we use an auction site called Public Surplus where we auction our surplus items.
Okay, will that be done sooner rather than later?
I know the surplus form came through. I know the surplus form came through.
It was on tonight's agenda.
It was on tonight's agenda, so we're working on getting things loaded onto the auction site.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So council, I do remember, that was on the, on the throwing of candy, if, if some of this, what made it more dangerous was that everybody was all over the place. So if we go back to normal, where everybody's pacing really nicely, I look back at 16 years, I don't remember, or even before that, when I was in here, I don't remember there was any incident where people made a claim, getting hit in the eye or, or anything, that's a pretty good record, you know, and that's part of risk management. In my book, you look at the record, you know, so I think our record shows for itself. But again, we were also, a lot of people were behaving, either the way they, they paced themselves, how people were throwing candy, things like that. So you just have to understand that part of the process can create unassafety, but when you, when you have a good process, I think, and everybody's more aware, especially the participants like us, with the proper communication, I think that we can, you know, lower that risk quite a bit. And especially with our record, I think it's been, you know, pretty good. So just wanted to add that part as we move on. Okay, looks like we're, council, I mean, council, staff, you need, you got everything you need?
I just want to make sure that we're clear. Candy, pacing of vehicles, those seem to be the two items that were otherwise outstanding.
And the policy risk tolerance, there's three.
Okay.
And the what?
The policy surrounding risk tolerance.
All right, yeah.
Yeah, that's an overriding, overarching piece.
Yeah, but if I were bullet pointing this out?
And communication.
Okay, I just want to make sure we got the bullet points lined up.
Communication, participants.
For the part, the communication for participants, and for,
Correct.
Spectator safety. They need to stay in there by the curb, and the ones that are on the east side, the safety concerns there.
I'm just, I'm just narrowing down the do-outs, so.
Okay.
Just as I said, it's just, Councilmember Grassi said it well, and that is volunteers. I know that we search and call for volunteers for different events. I don't think, you know, there should be a call for this, so that they're, with a vest or whatever, and they're standing along that medium, so people, especially on the east side. The west side usually are pretty good, they got the sidewalk, but the east side, especially the medium, and then you got the other side, and they're all trying to, you know, get closer, because most of us are thrown to the right, we're on the right-hand side. And so I think that having volunteers or something that says, I know, maybe a tape, I don't know, a yellow tape where it crosses, a long one, but still, something that, that says, don't go past this over here, so, something to, I know it's more work, but we don't have a choice. Okay, I don't see any more hands, and we appreciate you listening to us, and we appreciate your time and, and everything. We look forward to, all of us, to work together and, and resolve this by, by the morning.
I want it tonight, we do.
Okay, well, thank you, and I call this meeting adjourned.
We still have one item in our agenda.
Oh. Oh, excuse me, yes. So Mayor Portem, due to the late one, we have a very important last study session, council rules, I can't see that being done by the next two minutes. So, and unless this council, it's up to you, at least four, saying that we will stay here until it's done, which I would imagine an hour plus. So anyone, anyone opposes?
Is there?
Well, Mayor Portem, go ahead.
Mayor, I, I'd like to move to amend the agenda to strike item number 10, council rules of procedures amendments, and move that to a future meeting.
Happy second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? Okay, I call this meeting adjourned.
Smart decision.
Yeah.